Back.
Thank you, I'm working to set it up right now.
Okay, that's.
You, I'm working to get it set up right now, it didn't automatically do it, I don't know why. So I'm looking for adding you here.
Okay, that seems like, seems like it's working. I press the Spanish, right?
Yes. Alright, I think we are now up and running, so um Joe, after Brandy calls to order, maybe you can give an instruction in Spanish how to access. Oriness, who am, whomever.
You're muted, Brandy. Thanks for talking to me, I told you Dave would be the first, but not the last, I apologize. Uh it looks like we have all our board members back, so I'll go ahead and reconvene and get us back in session. And Joe, would you mind doing the interpretation announcement?
Bienvenidos a todos, muchas gracias por haber venido hoy. Uh tenemos hoy interpretación como siempre, así que está en otro canal. Si está este, me escuchando ahora, vamos a empezar en inglés, así que por favor, cambie hasta la hacia la, la, la otra lengua, que está en este, en este marcador, que es un globo así. Okay, aquí siempre tenemos español para ustedes, gracias.
Thank you. Okay, with that, let's move, we left off with four comments, let's go ahead and move into superintendent comments.
Okay, um, one short comment, I wanted to let people know that the academic calendar development is underway. Um usually we're a little bit earlier than that, but that one has moved back a bit, so we're still uh not ready to present that to the board, I want the board not to worry that we will have academic calendar work uh that is upcoming, but we still have uh some work to do on that uh and work with our um associations and administrators to make sure that we've kind of got that in mind before we bring it forward, so. I didn't want anybody to panic or worry, uh we will have an academic calendar to you soon. Uh and then also, uh as most of you may know, February is, of course, Black History Month. Uh the first Black History Month happened in nineteen seventy, and then in nineteen seventy-six, President Gerald Ford uh urged Americans to honor the US bicentennial by also celebrating Black History Month. Uh tonight, I wanted to recognize the efforts of our youth uh whose power uh to make social change has always been real, this is the reason we're all here uh working with students. Uh and so someone who um many of you may not know uh was Claudette Colvin, and she was a pioneer of the nineteen fifty's civil rights movement. On March second nineteen fifty-five, she was arrested at the age of fifteen in Montgomery, Alabama, for refusing to give up her seat to a white woman on a segregated bus. Now, this occurred nine months before the more widely known incident in which Rosa Parks, who was the secretary of the local chapter of the NAACP, helped spark the nineteen fifty-five Montgomery boy uh bus boycott. She was also, so Claudette Colvin was also one of the five plaintiffs in the first federal court uh case filed on February first nineteen fifty-six as Browder versus Gale to challenge bus segregation in Montgomery. Uh in United States, uh United States District Court, she testified before the three judge panel that heard the case, and remember, she's a teenage kid um on the front lines with this. On June thirteenth nineteen fifty-six, the judges determined that the state and local laws requiring bus segregation in Alabama were unconstitutional. Uh the case went to the Supreme Court on appeal by the state of Alabama, and the Supreme Court upheld the district court's ruling on November thirteenth nineteen fifty-six. So a month later, the Supreme Court affirmed the order uh to Montgomery and the state of Alabama to end bus segregation, so um efforts of a young person uh fully um nine months before uh the one that we always know uh more about, which is Rosa Parks, so I just wanted to to highlight uh someone who um should not be lost to history for her efforts uh in working on the civil rights movement. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Great, thank you. Next is our consent agenda, and I'd like to point out a donation from the city of Dundee for twenty thousand seven hundred dollars for the coronavirus relief fund allocation for internet hotspots. And um it, it has been great to see the partnership between both Dundee and Newburgh and the school district because of the city level. Working with them to get those funds is incredibly important and impactful for our students, so thank you. Uh with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Okay, motion is second, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Alright, back to Dr. Morlock for our uh school um update.
Thank you, and I'm still unmuted. Hey Dave, I made it, I'm two for two right now, I just want to be really clear about that, so. Alright, so. Uh I want to give a few updates, I'll go through them, uh some of the stuff that's been coming out, of course. Uh Greg has been um communicating exceptionally well to all the family members across the district. Um I want to let you know that at this point, we have vaccinated three hundred and seventy-one staff members at clinic so far. Uh Thursday, we'll have about ninety-six more slots. And that means that after Thursday's clinic, we probably will have fewer than eighty slots left that we need uh to fill to cover all of our staff. Um not all staff have chosen to take it, so we, we have left it open for people to choose, uh the vast majority have. Um but I think we've made really good progress on getting um folks their first dose. Um I'm gonna just thank publicly once again uh Greg Cuskawa for all of his hard work communicating out this, the changes come fast and furious. The rules change, the signup process changes, um how it goes out. I know our staff have been very responsive to taking those last minute slots as well, so I want to thank them, but but Greg has done an exceptionally good job of keeping all of that organized and getting those communications out, and I wish I could explain to you the insanity around doing that, um but it is, um we're, we're closing in on the first uh round of doses for everyone uh who wished to take the vaccine. Numbers are back up this week, so we've done, we've hit kind of the low point, we've bounced back up an additional thirty-three per hundred thousand, so we're two hundred and thirty-three per hundred thousand up from last week's low of about two hundred. Um that keeps us as a county in the extreme risk category. Um the modeling that I showed you last uh meeting from OHSU shows that we are heading into another climb of cases um which may peak in early March. All bets are off because there are lots of uh things at play, uh it has tracked fairly closely to what they had before, but that, those modelings were done, of course, before we had the uh variants and then um the availability of the vaccine was kind of unknown, so. Um right now, as I said before, we've got most of our folks by then will have had their first dose, and others will have already had their second doses and will be um ready to um to deal with that coming up, so that's good news. Uh the planning continues as we're nearing the time, we've targeted to restart. I did, uh we did talk about it last time, uh we will not be opening before March eighth. Uh and that's still our target for kindergarteners uh to be learning, returning to school first. We still have several things that we're working on, those, of course, busing, food service, cleaning protocols, entry and exit uh procedures, testing protocols, the quarantine placement, location placement in the school, PPE distribution, all of those details are still being worked out. We uh are also in the final discussions for the actual daily schedule for elementary students, um which may be different than secondary students uh due to the differing needs of uh the age groups, so those final decisions and the schedule we've made uh at the end of this week or early next, we will communicate out, of course, to everybody uh as we get there. We will be sending out surveys to families to get a better idea of how many people are planning on returning to the hybrid system or staying in CDL. Those will be very important for us to plan uh our staffing and how it goes. Um and I want to just put it out there as a clear reminder that it is possible that students in elementary may have a different teacher than they do now. Of course, we will try to keep them all with those, but depending upon how many uh families return to hybrid, how many remain in CDL, and the staffing needs for both systems, that will determine uh how we're able to place uh each student. Our COA numbers, our Salem Online Academy uh numbers did not change by very much, I think it was fewer than ten as a differential, so those staffing numbers are are fairly well set. Uh so I think uh for COA, at least, we're ready to go for those. At uh secondary schools, we're still on track to open the hybrid on April nineteenth, which is the beginning of the fourth quarter. Students at secondary, of course, change uh teachers every um semester, trimester, semester, uh so that's uh less disruptive, of course, for them. We are uh increasing uh our limited in-person instruction opportunities, so uh we are seeing a lot of some more students coming at middle school. The continuing uh efforts at the high school to bring in more students as they have capacity and as more uh staff are available or and or vaccinated. Uh secondary will stick to the AB schedule, attending in person every other day based upon their cohort. Other days will be spent doing their asynchronous uh work, those are the same plans we had uh in the fall when we talked about our reopening blueprints, so those have not changed. Most districts in Oregon have chosen uh that model, there are some places that have done them differently. Um we're basing ours, of course, on the numbers of students we would have, the availability of staff, the courses required, and the spaces we had to do it, so. Uh we're still working through all those, but, but um the AB schedule for secondary students specifically uh is still uh our target and what we're most likely going to be doing for them. So please watch your email box for the important surveys coming out to you to let us know your family's plan. Um we know it's a little bit like RSVPs for, you know, weddings, and you have to extrapolate, you know, if you get this percentage of few folks coming in, you know, how many burgers do you have to buy? Uh we're hoping that uh this RSVP will be much shorter and easy to get back to us. Uh we do want to hear from you because we will be making our best determinations on staffing and on placement uh based upon those numbers that come in, so. Uh I think I'll pause there and see if there are any questions uh about that, but we will, as I said before, we'll continue to communicate this out as our uh plans firm, uh and as we have better ideas for numbers.
Hey Joe.
Yeah, Dave.
What's, what's the, so like an AB, the, all the kids will go like say on one day, or we'd be like more split on that, so we're breaking them up?
Yeah, so they would be um essentially that, that uh they would go uh to all their classes in person on one day, and then they would be all asynchronous on the other day, so then they would flip, right, so you take your classes, you basically cut them in half and part go on, you know, on Monday, Wednesday, and part goes on Tuesday, Thursday, but they'd be staying in those cohorts all the way through.
Thank you.
Got it.
Any other questions?
I got one, sorry, took me a while, I'm mute. Uh so when, uh if I'm a high school student and I'm at home that day, am I going to be watching what happens online in the class, so we're not trying to do two triangles at one time, okay?
Thank you, no, nope.
Okay. As always, send them Joe's way if something comes in your head, yeah.
Yeah, please watch for those surveys, please let us know, so we can do our best to get everybody staffed up, and we'll continue to give out more updates as we get them.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Um Greg, next up, we have our Equity Committee update, and um Cass Thonstad was going to be giving that for the Equity Committee, can you take her from panelist? Or I'm sorry, from attendee to panelist?
Yes, just gave that.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Sure. Uh so my name is Cass Bonstad, and I am the Assistant Principal at Mountain View Middle School and part of the Equity Ad-Hoc Committee. And so I've had the opportunity of co-facilitating with the NAST for a couple of meetings. Um as a team, we really appreciated our student voices on the Equity Ad-Hoc Committee and um are excited to learn more through the amplification of student voices specifically. Uh so with that in mind, we have started exploring the use of empathy interviews. Um and empathy interviews are a specific style of interview. Uh it takes a human-centered approach to understanding the feelings and experiences of others. Um and it's really more like a conversation and less than an interview. Uh and at our last meeting, we got to see an empathy interview of a student. And then our homework was to practice an empathy interview uh with somebody who was a safe person, maybe it was a student, maybe it was a significant other or um somebody that we knew, just using similar questions to practice. Um and then our goal at our next meeting is to share what we learned and practice again with each other, so that we've had some opportunities to practice an empathy interview and be ready to um use best practices to do some empathy interviews with students in our community members. Um the interviews that we'll do with our students and community members will really focus on equity and seeing the system as it currently exists. Um we want to hear more about their lived experiences in our school specifically and with our school district. Thinking about, you know, a wide variety of ages, genders, races, from different schools, different backgrounds, um different parts of our system. Uh so that hopefully we'll be able to better understand what it's like to be a student in our school, or to be a family member of a student in our school. Um and from there, be able to start talking about um patterns we see and things we see that we might be able to start taking next steps on. Um so that's where we're at in our work.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Cass or anyone on the Equity Committee? No, okay, thank you. It was super short notice, and I really appreciate your time, thank you for joining us.
Yep, okay.
Okay, next we have our um start time committee update, and it looks like Dr. Morlock's going to be presenting that for us this evening.
Yeah, and this one is a short one, so I've been uh talking with uh some of our school leaders to figure out kind of what some of the challenges are in timing as well as working through busing, of course, we focus most of our busing energy right now uh on limited in-person and um running our Uber Eats program and also uh getting ready for um starting up kindergarten and then throughout. Um so what I have heard, however, is that the nine o'clock start time may be um a bit too late for high school to begin. Um so we would like to um propose, and of course, we're not, we're not ready to vote on it yet, but I wanted to give you an update of where they are. Um that high schools start no later than eight thirty. Um that would put middle school um at about eight forty-five, uh because they would be doing a drop-off and then um taking uh to middle school, and then elementary would be somewhere in the neighborhood of seven forty-five. Um there may be some adjustment in there, and we've got uh to nail that down with our bus company, of course, because they have some say on it. I know the, the committee, when they were doing their work, proposed or uh used the uh forty-five minute uh time window between uh building start times, and so uh what I have heard coming back from uh our secondary folks is that certainly eight thirty would be a time they would like to not start any later than that. Uh maybe we may be able, of course, to adjust that, um but they felt that nine o'clock uh might be a little too late, so we would have to work again uh a bit at elementary, and maybe we can make some further adjustments uh and get some information, but I wanted to let you know uh what the feedback was uh coming back in from them.
Great, are there any questions for Joe of the Start Time Committee? I had a quick one regarding the elementary start time, seven forty-five, so when would that roughly put the end of the day for our elementary school kids?
Do, 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 making me do math in my head as I stand here, right? It'll be somewhere between two and two thirty, I'd have to think about exactly what that would be, yeah.
And then, so for the Start Time Committee members, I know you all sent out that excellent survey, um which was great. Did, was, what was the feedback from parents regarding after-school care, impacts on after-school care for those elementary kids, do you remember any feedback from that?
The biggest piece of feedback I remember was that everyone said it's a lot easier to schedule after-school uh care than it is before-school care. One thing that stuck out, out to me.
Okay, great, thank you. Well Greg's math says two twenty-five for elementary, okay, thank you Greg. Um yeah, that I think would be my only concern, just to ensure that it's um something that our elementary families can um adjust to and and have a larger chunk of time that they need to find potentially care for kids, but if that was the feedback, um then that's good to know, yeah.
Yeah, I'll work out some final details and and um bring up a proposal for you to look at.
Any other questions?
You know, we have two alternate proposals to con- consider, which is fine with me if that's what it is. Keep the original proposal and then the new revised proposal both of us in front of us, okay?
Yep, yep.
Well, thank you again to everybody who was involved in this, I know it took a lot of team effort and um I'm excited quite honestly to see the change, I think it's going to be beneficial.
Yeah.
Oh, a quick question, sorry. Um, is there, and maybe this is more logistical, is there a plan for um if older kids usually pick up the elementary kids? If we would hold the elementary kids, I don't know, at the gym or something? Um because I know that that's something that we used to do, we would pick up our younger siblings, so that's definitely something that I want us to consider.
Yeah, and that actually kind of connects with um the comment Brian made just before that, which is, it's easier for us to do that after than before. Uh even for us as uh as staffing that, or if we're looking at aftercare, even if it's a short amount of time you know, in between for them to pick up, so it's far easier for us to do that at that time than it is in the morning. Um so that's something we can certainly consider, and I know that might be um you know, even if it's just fifteen minutes, it may make a huge difference just for pickup, things like that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I was just trying to leave the balance of that time for Dr. Derek Brown, because we're ready to get into that, so make sure you have plenty of time for that.
Yeah, it's good, alright, well as always, if anything comes up, reach out to a certain time committee members. Okay, with that, if you're ready. Uh Derek, you ready? Okay, go ahead, the floor is yours, next up, we've got our curriculum report.
Okay, thank you Brandy and Board of Directors. See here, share my screen. Oops, ah, not that far. Okay. Alright, thanks again for the time uh tonight, I'm Derek Brown, I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm gonna walk you through some information to give everybody um an update on where we are relative to curriculum adoption. My hope throughout this uh conversation is that we all have a little bit more of a common understanding of why the work is so important. Uh which means more than just the uh, the, the laws and regulatory guidance that come behind it. Uh but we'll talk about those things so that we all have that information, talk a little bit about uh the state adoption cycles and uh the work that we're gonna do to try to uh sync up with those cycles. Um and then we'll talk about a few other things that are important to be thinking about uh when we're going through all these processes. So starting with the state uh regulatory guidance on this, it is written into state law uh that for uh every program, the course of study in grades K through twelve, districts will adopt instructional materials on a cycle that's established by the State Board of Education, and again, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about what those cycles look like in a couple of slides. Um and that districts will include processes as they go through those processes for um including opportunities for citizen uh involvement in the conversation. So those are important things for us to think about. There are another, you know, dozen or so state laws that also touch on the requirements around um instructional materials and curriculum. Uh but this is the, kind of the cornerstone piece for us. Uh here in Newburgh, um we also have a policy that talks about this. Policy ILA says that the Board of Directors retains the authority to approve district instructional material adoptions and delegates the administrative procedures to the superintendent. Um the district will review instructional materials in accordance with the State Board of Education's adoption cycles. Uh and that all materials recommended for adoption must be approved for use by our board, so uh there's a lot of consistency between uh what the state asks us to do, and then what we've established here in Newburgh as our own um processes. Sorry, there we go. So why is this really important? This slide is a way of kind of thinking visually about it. If we don't have core materials, common um materials that are used across our system, then we definitely land in a place of inequality where access to learning is, becomes dependent on where you, where you might live here in our community. Um and we, we definitely are uh want to move away from that um to a system where um we, we have uh those materials and access to, to those, to those content areas um across the board. We don't necessarily, we're not necessarily trying to move from a space of inequality to equality, which is depicted in the picture in the upper right-hand frame where everybody is getting the same thing, but rather to equity, where we want to make sure everybody has access to wonderful opportunities to learn, but that they are customized, customizable so that we can meet learners where they are, we know that all of our students have differing needs, and so uh we need curriculum that uh is also flexible in those ways, and of course we also want to be evaluating our system as we go through all of this to find uh places where there may be barriers and work to, to remove them. So we're really trying to get to, you know, equity and justice in this work. Robert Marzano is um widely considered to be one of the pioneers in educational research uh in the United States, and um back in the early two thousands uh published a book called What Works in Schools, translating research into practice where he had done uh pretty deep research into lots of different school districts across the country. And based on his uh work, uh made the statement that a guaranteed and viable curriculum is the single most important initiative for a school or district to engage in in order to raise student achievement. Uh what he found was that there was a significant relationship between um having guaranteed viable curriculum, curriculum in place and seeing uh student achievement, achievement increase over time uh as compared to districts where they may not have guaranteed and viable curriculum and what that meant relative to student achievement. So we know that there is uh a really important connection between having guaranteed viable curriculum in place and what that means about uh the likelihood of increasing student achievement for all students, but what do those words really mean? So Marzano says guaranteed means every student is provided the opportunity to learn a core curriculum which provides them with the probability of success in school, so again we, we don't want a scenario where the, 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 the kind of learning experiences that you are able to access are dependent on where you live within the district boundary. We want to know that no matter where you are in the Newburgh-Dundee communities that there will be guaranteed learning experiences, and, and an important part of that equation is having curriculum in place that everyone is able to use. Viable means the schools make sure, schools and school districts make sure that the necessary time is available and protected so that students will be uh will be able to learn the guaranteed curriculum. Uh so that means lots of different things, it certainly means uh setting up school schedules that make sense so that everybody has the appropriate uh access, uh and it also means, you know, making sure that we're providing professional development and doing other things to implement curriculum well so that it is viable. And those two things together really become what Marzano calls the opportunity to learn, making sure that everybody has access and that we've carved out the appropriate time to use it well, constant. to use it well, constitute opportunity to learn. So switching gears just a little bit, the State Board of Education reviews and adopts instructional materials on a seven-year cycle, and, and that's actually written into state law as well. And so there are a few things that they do as part of that seven-year cycle, which includes putting out requests, bid to publishers, so to folks that are creating curriculum, and there are many, many of those out there. Bringing teachers together and administrators and other education professionals to take a look at that curriculum and answer hard questions about the degree to which curriculum is aligned to state content standards, which are also approved by the State Board. And then once they've done that work and they come up with a list of what they refer to as the approved curriculum and instructional materials, they also negotiate agreements with those publishers to try to give local districts a bit of leverage and save a little money if we, you know, were to choose any of them. So so we're able to hopefully be efficient in our spending in that way. We have to be careful, though, with, with the state's list, because they've got, I'm gonna call it a bit of a low bar when, when they determine what tools they'll put on that, on that list. And so fifty-one percent represents the amount of standards that must be covered in the curriculum for them to, for the state to say that it is aligned to standards. So, so if fifty-one percent of the standards in, let's say, English Language Arts are covered in a curriculum, then the state will say that's aligned. And so as a result, we have to apply a very critical eye to any instructional materials we're using, even if, even if a publisher says this is aligned to the Common Core, we're sure that we have to dig a little bit deeper and make sure that we've answered hard questions for ourselves to feel confident in that. So we take caution. This slide shows you what the current seven-year cycles are at the state level for the core, the key content areas. So you can see, I'll just go down through it really quickly. For English Language Arts on the top, their adoption cycle is twenty fourteen to twenty twenty, twenty twenty. They haven't released the new ELA approved list yet, but we would expect them to do that pretty soon. English Language Proficiency, you can see these are each staggered by a year. So English Language Proficiency Standards, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one. Math, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two. Science, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. Health and Fiscal Education, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four. Social Science, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. And World Language, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. So every year they're cycling through and making decisions about what's going to be on the approved list. What happens the, the year or two prior to the beginning of each of those cycles is the state, again, brings together education professionals to take a look at the standards and make, they make decisions first about whether or not the standards might change. So you all remember a while ago now when the state adopted the Common Core standards. And that was a long, multi-year conversation that happened at the state level. And then now they're on a cycle of reviewing those standards and making decisions about whether or not they want to make adjustments to them. And that's true in all of the content areas that you see before you. Looking through our records to the best of my ability and talking to folks that have been here a little longer than I have, this is a list of the most recent form, I'll call it formal adoptions in Newburgh. So the last time we adopted curriculum in Social Science, two thousand and seven, for PE Health, two thousand and nine, Science, two thousand and ten, Math, twenty eleven, and ELA, twenty sixteen, and that was just at the K through five level. So as you can see, we're a little behind the curve in most of those areas and have some work to do to, to catch back up and, and have core curriculum. Also, I think with the exceptions of Math and ELA, the standards have changed certainly since the last time we adopted. In twenty fourteen, the State Board adopted, twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, the State Board adopted the Next Generation Science standards, for example. And so that, that would be a place where you could highlight that our last adoption, which was more than a decade ago, would not necessarily be aligned to the most current content standards. So moving forward here in Newburgh, you've heard me talk a little bit about some of the pilot projects that we have going on, which are, have been great projects, and we're learning a lot as we go through them. We currently are piloting different programs in Math, K through twelve, and we are piloting a science program at our two middle schools. And again, we're meeting with teachers regularly to learn more about the effectiveness of those tools, what kinds of supports they need, and working with the publishers and going back and forth to provide those supports. I want to point out also that during CDL, we've, we've purchased quite a bit more, but I don't really count that under the adoption umbrella. Because we're, those were tools that were put in place specifically to help support teachers and students to get through a short period of time. So so we have a number of tools that we're using really across the board, and they're not really part of a formal pilot or an adoption cycle, although we've been, I think, really intentional about making sure that we are connecting with teachers about about those tools as well and collecting information to better know what's working and not working, because when we, when we get to the right moment in time to actually move into a formal adoption process, we might want to talk about using some of those tools and evaluating them again as a potential long-term solution for us. So what we want to get to is a strategic plan that will allow us to adopt curriculum in those content areas and do it in a staggered fashion so that we can manage, manage those processes from year to year. We can handle the financial burden that comes along with that as well. And, and maybe most importantly, be aligned to those state adoption cycles that I mentioned, so that we're not in an off-cycle situation where we might be at risk of maybe a curriculum coming off of the approved list or something like that. So with that in mind, the, the schedule that we're hoping to move forward with listed here is next year, so the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, we would move into taking a look at English Language Arts. Again, we're at the, we're at the end of our, coming up to the end of our contract using the CKLA program at the elementary level. So we'll, we'll need to evaluate that program and, again, talk about whether or not it's the right tool for us moving forward. English Language Proficiency and World Language as well. So if we work on those next year and get to a point where we find programs that we hopefully can bring to the board for review and potential approval, that would, that would align us to the state adoption cycles. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, shift into Math and Social Studies, and then in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Science, and then Health PE, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. I do want to point out that so particularly for, let's say, Science and Health and PE, this doesn't mean that we would be waiting on doing some of the prep work that we need to do to get ready for handling an adoption process. So it doesn't mean that those are going to be pushed down the road for, you know, two or three years, and we're not going to provide teachers with any support or do any work to, to prepare. There's a lot of work we can do each year in each of these content areas to make sure that we're moving forward the right way. Just to say a little bit more about some of the process that, some of the activities associated with our processes here at Newburgh. So if we were entering, let's say, let's use ELA as the example for next year, knowing that we want to, hopefully by the end of next school year, adopt ELA curriculum. In the fall, we would be bringing teachers together to, again, take a look at the standards. So we would want to review the standards. We want to check and see if ODE has made any adjustments to the standards, or I should say the State Board of Education. And we want to know specifically what those things are and how do they change the expectations for both teachers and learners, our students. We want to get groups of teachers together across our grade bands so that we can take a look at what we like to call our vertical alignment. So have we thought through, what does it look like for a student who might be leaving second grade and what they've, the content they've mastered? And then what it looks like for them entering third grade and what they learned during third grade, and then when they leave third and entering fourth. We did that last year with our math teachers and found that it was a really beneficial set of experiences to bring people in and sit in a room together across graded levels to, to talk about what it looks like at each of their grade levels. So we do that kind of work in the fall. Part of that work also is asking questions about what do we value and believe about English Language Arts or Science or Math and, and making sure we have some common ground there. We also set up evaluation criteria. So what are the characteristics of, of curriculum and other instructional materials that we value the most? What are the things we can use that really help us make sure we're aligned to our values and beliefs and keep us aligned across our system? The algorithm of that work is to have publishers come in and show us their tools, pick a couple of those potentially to pilot and to evaluate them. And in the springtime, we would invite the community to participate in some conversations and show them our, the work that we've done to that point and collect feedback from them. And if, if we've done all of that well enough, we would be coming to you in the spring of the year to, to review our work and to hopefully adopt whatever tool we might have landed on. So there's certainly a lot more that goes along with all of those things, but generally speaking, an adoption process includes all of that across a year to, to really make sure that you're, you know, purchasing a tool that does all the things that you need it to do and is aligned to your values and beliefs about learning in that content area. I mentioned before that when the State Board of Education reviews curriculum from publishers, they really don't look a whole lot further than the alignment to the content standards. And if they find evidence of fifty-one percent or more of the content standards being built into that curriculum, then they tend, they will stamp it aligned. We like to look a little deeper than that. So we have some processes that we've used in the past where we bring teachers in to actually take a look at the standards and deconstruct them and have conversations about what they mean, again, in terms of teaching and learning expectations. We also look at things like accessibility supports. So we want to know that any curriculum that we're using is going to be accessible to all students, including those that might have unique learning needs or in need of language support and things like that. So we look at the degree of functionality with, with regard to accessibility. We look at things like the assessments and the data dashboards and data reports and things like that, that a curriculum might produce. We take a look at technology. Is this a tool that is flexible enough that it can be delivered in an online fashion as, as well as other formats that make sense? And we take a look at ease of use as well. So we want to know that from a teacher's standpoint, that they feel like the, the curriculum is something that is not just highly effective, but is something that is intuitive for them to use and students as well. So it's really about more than just whether or not fifty-one percent of the standards show up in the curriculum. We, we want to look deeper at these tools to make sure they fit. And all of those things are about equity. Each one of those things has to do with making sure, again, going back to Marzano's thinking and others, that all of this has to do with making sure that we are maximizing opportunity to learn for students and that it doesn't matter where you live in our community, that, that we know we're giving you a fantastic opportunity to learn every single day. Just a few other things. When we're thinking about curriculum, and this has come up in some other conversations that you all have had, I want to point out that curriculum is only one part of the equation. So it's definitely not the the end-all, be-all. It's not the one thing that you do that suddenly changes everything in your system in positive ways. But it is a very important part of the equation. We know that instruction is another, you know, cornerstone of the foundation. So having a great curriculum in place really won't get you very far unless it's coupled also with really fantastic instruction and a number of other things. So just want to name that while, while it's a really important part of our work, it's, it's only one piece. There is no perfect curriculum. So we try to find a curriculum that, we, we hope that we will always find a curriculum that is highly aligned, that meets our minimum thresholds in terms of all those other criteria that I listed. But it's, it's unlikely that we're ever going to find anything that hits the mark on every single thing. So we have to be prepared also to fill the gaps with other supplemental tools. And that's something that our teachers are, are accustomed to doing, and it's part of our system right now, where we are able to identify where the gaps might be and then find a tool that fits that gap well. So there's more work to do in those areas. I talked about instruction being critical here. Implementation also with anything, and certainly curriculum has to be very intentional. When we're successful in going through all those processes that I named and getting to a point where we're ready to ask the board for a formal adoption, that represents a lot of work that we hope builds all the right momentum, but it's really just the start of the work. Really, the next few years is where a lot of the work happens in terms of implementing a curriculum well. Making sure that teachers and administrators and other folks have all of the professional development that they need, making sure that we're going back and checking our, our evaluation criteria continuously, making sure we're connecting with students to learn about their experiences as well. So there's a lot that needs to happen in the first few years in particular to make sure that it's implemented with fidelity. So we have to be very planful and intentional. If we just go through the process and adopt a curriculum and then hand that over to schools to implement, we're increasing the risk that it's not going to work very well. So we have to do more. And that also means that we're all accountable for it, from Dr. Morlock throughout all of our buildings. We, we all have to, have to own the process and buy into it and know that we're all trying to, to move the same direction. So holding ourselves accountable for that work, which ultimately I just firmly believe means when we, when we do the work with each other and it's built on trust and respect, we, again, are increasing the likelihood of success. So it's, it's messy work, and we're all human beings. And I've noticed throughout several of our processes that sometimes we have to take a moment and adjust our plan a little bit because something didn't work out the way we thought it, it might. And so on. So you know, allowing people to come into spaces together and you know, share their truth about what's working with curriculum or not working, or what evidence they find or don't find, and really honoring all those voices, we believe builds the trust and respect we need to be able to move all of it forward. So that's what I've got for you for my slides tonight. And I was not paying attention too much to the chat as I was going through all of that. So I'll pause and see if anybody has any questions that I can try to answer.
Hey Derek, this is Dave. Hey, so like when we go to the, like the vertical alignment, and then the values, the beliefs and the criteria, is that dictated by the state or is that dictated here in Newburgh?
Yeah, that's a great question. The state doesn't really tell you anything about how you do this. They just say you have to do it, and they give good reasons why. But what I've described to you there in terms of some of the work that we've done most recently around math really had to do with the planning that our teams have done and, and in terms of thinking about a thoughtful, logical process. So we don't want to go out and try to buy curriculum or implement curriculum where we haven't spent some time making sure that we have a common understanding of what the content standards are telling us about student learning and about the role of teachers in the student learning. So it starts there. And then we move forward from there. I believe also that it's, I think it's really important to name what you value and believe about learning in any of those areas. I, I can use a couple of examples from the work that the, the math teachers did last year. They came together and you know, we talked about the standards for mathematical practice. We did a lot of standards deconstruction work. We did a lot of standards deconstruction work. And the outgrowth of that was people saying, you know, we really value collaborative learning in math. We believe that's really important as, as one example of a criteria. Multi-step problem solving, research, things like that. They were naming things like that. So those become the things you're looking for when you invite publishers to come in and tell you about their tools. And those become the things that you're looking for when you start piloting a program. Where do you find evidence of those things showing up in, in the learning? And that's been pretty effective. It also, I think going back to the trust and respect piece, it really helps develop ownership of the process and, and develops the trust and respect that you need by saying, hey, we're going to name these things that we believe about math learning. And then we're going to look for those things together as we, as we pilot the program. So those are Newburgh specific things, Dave. And I think we'll, as we go through all of these processes, we'll also continue to evaluate our own processes. What worked about that? What do we need to maybe rethink and do a little bit differently? There are districts that do it a lot in, in much simpler ways. Meaning we can invite publishers in and have them give us their pitch and take a look at the alignment to standards piece and then just make decisions about what we pilot and move forward. We could certainly expedite the process. But I think our teachers appreciate the opportunity to get together and think a little bit more deeply about what we really need and, and kind of name those things so that we're, we know we're all moving in there, in the same direction together.
Oh, thank you.
Derek, I have a question.
Yeah.
Could you explain to me what criteria we're using to evaluate whether we're successfully achieving equity or not in our school district?
I, well, yeah, there's probably a few different things. For me, from a teaching and learning standpoint specifically, if I'd be looking at our, you know, our achievement and our growth scores, I'd be looking at all, a lot of our outcome data. If we're, if the things that we're doing relative to the materials that we purchase or the programs that we implement are not showing up in terms of outcomes, meaning that we don't, we see reducing gaps over time, then I think we have an obligation to go back and, and think through it a little bit more. There's probably a lot more to how we answer that question. There's certainly a lot more to the, to the work than just the teaching and learning component. But while I'm looking through that lens right now, you know, I'd be looking at, at our, at our data. And if we have, if we have gaps that are not closing in ways that we would expect them to close, then I think we haven't solved the problem yet and we have to keep working through it.
Gaps between who?
Yeah, between any, any of our groups, you know? I think that our, any of our traditionally underserved groups. Again, if we're not seeing closed gaps there, so, and you, and you, I, I like to use the state's definitions, even though we're a lot smaller sample. So the state produces reports where they use a, a group called combined disadvantaged. And so race ethnicity wise, that would mean basically any students who are not white or Asian. And again, at the state level, it makes sense to look at data in an aggregate way like that. We have, we have some groups of students who, who the sample is so small that it skews the data and it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. But, but that doesn't, but Newburgh is still in the same boat where we have traditionally underserved groups of students. And if we implement a program and we do that well, and we're looking at that data one, two, three years in, and we're not seeing improvement in terms of how the gap is reducing, then I think we're forced to ask ourselves the question, did we get the right program? Or, or did we think that we implemented it well, but we really didn't? And there's something else. I mean, there's, there's always a lot of variables here and this is just one of them.
So is there ever a world that you would envision where all of the students within a group would score the same on these assessment tests?
I, I'm not sure how to interpret the question. I think, I think there's a world where if we do our instructional materials work really well, again, with work supporting instruction and all of that is built on an infrastructure where we've also been really thoughtful about our social emotional learning and, and other things, then I do, I do envision a world where we see gaps closing over time. And, you know, I don't know, I certainly can't tell you, does it take two years or three years to shorten the gap in math? Does it take seven or eight years? I, I don't know. But I, I do envision a world where we can see those things closing consistently and be able to point back at specific things we believe we're doing that are helping support make that happen.
I guess my question boils down to if you would never imagine that everyone within a group would score the same, why would you imagine that two groups would score exactly the same on tests?
I, I'm not sure if I understand, Brian. I might have to have you rephrase it.
You're, I don't think you even, even within families, you know, children have different levels of, I guess, what you'd call innate intelligence and intelligence is going to allow you to score higher on these assessment tests, right?
Well, yeah, they're not, they're not really intelligence tests though. They're criterion referenced, standards based assessments, which is something that's very different than like an IQ test. So all these tests are trying to tell us is what is the student's relative mastery of content? Relative being relative to the standards. And so I guess I don't, I guess in an ideal state, I wouldn't expect all students to be achieving, achieving the same score because there is no perfect score. What I, what I hope and what I do envision happening is that we get to a place where all of our students are demonstrating mastery of content at grade level. And a system that is sensitive enough, including the curriculum that you choose, that when you have students that enter it that are below grade level, we've got the tools and the instructional know-how to be able to have a plan to get them back to grade level. Again, for, for some students, that might be a month or two. For some students, that might be two or three years. But we have really deliberate and intentional planning and the right tools in place to be able to get them back to grade level. It's not about everybody having the same score or everybody acing the test. Or it's, it's not really about any of that. It's about mastering grade level content and, and, and not, and, and the likelihood of you mastering grade level content isn't based on your race or ethnicity or program affiliation like SPED or EL.
Hey Derek, I've got a question. I'm sorry, hey Brian? How about, do you want to finish your question? And then I think I need to move it on to other board members.
Yeah, I guess so. I think there's a danger in focusing too much on achievement gaps between groups, right? To me, it's better to have all of our students increasing their scores by 10% than to have one group increasing their scores by 10% and one group staying where they are or falling. But if you're focused on gaps, that top group falling would actually be a good thing. And to me, that's not a very good recipe for educational success.
Yeah, I, I definitely am not looking for any students falling or, or anything along those lines. You, you know, you can also have a situation where everybody is gaining, but you still have an increasing gap where certain groups are gaining at a much higher rate. I, I don't know. Again, I, I think the, the goal that I, that I believe our teachers are focused on is trying to give every student, no matter where they are in their learning relative to those grade level standards or whether or not they have unique learning needs, the best opportunities to learn that they can. And for those students that might be a little or a lot behind, knowing that we've got a really good plan in place to help them get back to grade level mastery of content. And I don't think anybody is interested in seeing that happen at the expense of any groups.
I, I will jump in and say, you know, other than Brian's hypothetical, I've never heard any staff, any board member suggest that falling standards were a good thing. Falling achievement was a good thing. I think it's a, well, it, no one has ever suggested that. And going down that hypo- hypothetical path, I don't think serves the district or serves our students. I, I will say Derek, I let you know this ahead of time. This has been a really helpful presentation. I, I do, it's helping me formulate some questions, I feel, but, but my, more what I have is that I feel like this is an area that we have not focused on strongly enough as a board. You know, I think that's reflected in standards that haven't been updated since, or curriculum that has not been updated since 2007. And this is definitely an area where I want to, as an individual board member, and I want to push us as a whole board to put more attention and use the tools at our disposal to, to make this more of a, a focus and a priority for us. So thank you for helping guiding that conversation and getting that going for us.
Yeah, thank you. I, you reminded me, Bob, I wanted to make one other comment that I forgot to during the slides. And, and that is that in the middle time between when we go through formal adoption processes and hopefully land on the tools that we think makes the most sense for us. And now it doesn't mean that teachers aren't using curriculum. It just means that we can't answer the guaranteed viable question as well as we want to. But we've got an assortment of things that teachers are using. We, we work with teachers often to better understand, you know, what they're using and what supports they might need. A, a lot of folks, just in education, generally speaking, use open educational resources. And there's some really good high quality stuff there. And there's also some, some stuff that's probably not the level of quality that we want to use. So again, I think it, it serves a district well to do the heavy lifting upfront. So when I, when I describe, you know, the criteria that we've, that we've started to craft and that we want to use, and I've described some of the processes, we haven't, we don't think we have a perfect process, but we do believe that investing the time on the front end to be really thoughtful about what we want and, and then take and apply that critical lens to what's out there. That helps us get to places where we can answer the guaranteed and viable question really, really well. But, but it does take time. As you can see, we, it's difficult for us, both from a resource, a time resource and a, a money resource standpoint, to try to do all of that at the same time. And, and I think it actually makes sense to align with the state's schedules as well.
Derek, that. And Bob, can I, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. You asked a question. I can follow up at the end.
Okay, mine was pulling up kind of what Derek just said. I know that the state board is looking at the math K-12 standards. And from your slide, maybe 2022 was the update time for that as far as from the state board coming down. So the current math program is being piloted. When it comes before the board, and I would just suggest as a board member, it would be really helpful to know what percentage of the state standards it does align with, right? If 51% is that bottom board and, and I agree with you, that's seems far too low. And I, and I appreciate the extra diligence that, that you're doing, that your staff is doing. But especially related to that, that math one, because it seems like that's going to be the first curriculum that's going to be rolled out under these sort of potentially updated standards and getting us aligned.
Right? Yeah, that's a great point. We probably are going to extend our math work into next year, which is why on the, the, the graphic that I gave you, I had math out in the 2022, 23 timeframe. Part of it is because I do stay plugged in with ODE to find, with their content specialists to find out where they are with their math review. They bring in teachers, they bring in folks to, to help have those conversations. I don't know that we're going to see a whole lot of change in the math standards in K through eight. There might be some, but if there are changes to math, I think more significant changes potentially will happen at the high school level. So it, again, it would make some sense for us to just continue our math work, to, to continue reviewing standards, to continue doing some pilot work next year and actually move math a little further down the road so that we don't buy a curriculum and then find out the next year that there's some change to standards and we're locked into a long-term contract. So that's, that's what I hope we're able to do there. And we also rely not only on our own work, but there are a number of third-party reviewers that, that look deeply at curriculum when they come out. And so we allow their reports to also inform our thinking around not just the standards alignment piece, but also other things like technology and ease of use for teachers and things like that.
So that same kind of question applies to our, our social, social studies curriculum as well. Because I know that, I believe it's 2025, the state is coming up with those updated standards. But we're looking to adopt sooner than that because I, I hope, and I am optimistic about that. We know that what we have right now is woefully outdated. So will that be a similar process? And then also the other part of that question is how is this impacting the COA curriculum?
Yeah, COA is, has operated slightly differently. So part of their model is to give parents choices on curriculum. We've included COA teachers and, and Tim Graham, who oversees that program in all of our conversations. So we'll have to, we'll have to continue to talk about, you know, how do we make sure that we continually have options to parents for COA that make sure that the options that they're looking at meet the criteria that, that we value? The first part of your question around, I, I do hope that we'll apply the same process to all of our content areas or at least a similar process where we start with standards. We do some work together as a, as a group of educators, teachers, other folks. And then that moves into, you know, taking a look at the tools that are out there. We, with CKLA at the elementary level, at least some of the social studies standards were covered by CKLA. And so that's something that we'll have to think about. That doesn't answer the question for middle and high school. They're using different tools right now that are not part of our adoption. And they'll, they'll likely continue to do that work. But next year, when we move into ELA, you know, it, it's pretty common for ELA curriculum to have some of the social studies standards built into it. So we just have to take a look at that and decide, have they covered it enough? And if so, great. And if not, what other supplemental tools might we need to, to pull in to give teachers access to, to help cover the social studies standards appropriately?
I have a couple of questions. Is it my turn? Can you put up the slide that showed when our last adoptions were?
Yeah. I thought I could, hold on.
That's okay.
Going to do it the other way. Oh. Sorry, hold on just a second. It's trying, Ron.
Okay.
Here we go. Oh, now you don't want to see that. Goodness sakes, here we go. Ah, there we go.
Sorry, I didn't mean to catch you.
No, it's, I'm learning new things. Thanks, Ron. There we go.
I can't see it yet.
Oh, oh, it's because I stopped. Okay, hold on. Sorry. There we go.
Now we're getting somewhere.
Now we're getting somewhere.
It is again.
Here we go. There you go. There you go.
Okay, yeah. Uh, I can't see the bottom. Is ELA the last one? Yeah, I guess that is the last one.
Right, yep.
So I got, came on the board in 12 and I remember the ELA adoption process. And so in that, from 11 till now, 10 years, we've just done the one. And you mentioned accountability earlier and I'm feeling like the board may not have done some things it should have done to help this happen more timely. Is there something that you can recommend to the board to help support you in this?
Well, you know, the opportunity to come and give you updates a, a few times a year is really helpful. I think moving forward, I'd love to not, not only have, you know, me talking to you about what this looks like kind of at a systems level, but also maybe bring some teachers into those conversations. I think the, the work that, that you do to, from a budget standpoint is also helpful. I think you've heard Nikki in the past has mentioned that our, our plan, as long as we can do it, is to allot about $500,000 a year toward this work. And so a portion of that work, a portion of those dollars rather, is associated with bringing teachers together and doing some of those kind of fall and winter activities. And then the rest of it, again, hopefully if we land in the place that we need to land and are recommending an adoption to you, would go toward the negotiation of a, of a contract, a six or a seven-year contract. So, you know, your continued support in terms of having an ear and, and listening and asking hard questions and then supporting the financial resource component that goes along with all of this. And, and honestly, that's one of the reasons it's a staggered plan. When, when it's been kind of backlog this long, it's difficult for any district, I would imagine, to try to come up with the resources to do it all at one time. And so your, your support in those ways is greatly appreciated.
Yeah, can you hear me now? I froze out and I had to switch to my phone, so I missed your entire answer, basically. I froze out and I had to switch to my phone, so I missed your entire answer, basically.
On YouTube.
Okay. I have a, I have a question for you, a separate second question, I think. And that is, we, these adoptions cost money, right? And.
Yeah.
So to kid ourselves caught up. Well, let's put it the other way, by not doing adoptions, and maybe there are some costs in the other unit and the materials we've been using, but. Can you estimate how much money we haven't spent by not adopting for the last four years?
I think for each of these areas, we're, we're going to allot about $500,000 a year to do the work, not all of that would go toward the actual purchase of the curriculum, but most of it would. Some of these things are more expensive than others, math, science and ELA are going to be bigger ticket items. One of the decisions that you have to make and and one of the things that we would be presenting to you. At a meeting where we're asking you to adopt is. A more specific description of what are we actually buying, so for really for any tool. You can purchase online nowadays. But you can also purchase hard copy, so we have to work out. We have to answer those questions before we come to you so that we can show you what the package actually includes. You could also purchase a curriculum where you don't actually purchase the assessment component because there's a different. Assessment tool that you think aligns more closely to what you're trying to accomplish. So so I guess that's a long way of Ron of saying that the costs can vary pretty significantly depending on. What you're trying to purchase in in the package, you know, if if you buy a curriculum and you buy online access, but you buy. Hard copy books, you know, for every student. Which a lot of teachers would like to do, that's going to have a different price tag than than if you don't do it that way, so. Those are, that's all part of the negotiation when we get to that point. I think Ron.
And Ron, those, yeah, did Ron, will we lose Ron again?
I don't know if he's present.
Derek, is there a reason the LP is not on this screen?
I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't find any evidence of the last time that we did ELP, so I didn't put it up here. So I'm I'm not sure exactly when the last time was that we adopted ELP standards. Of a curriculum, pardon me. Our EL teachers are definitely using tools, so they they have. Materials that we're using, again, this just means. It's been a long time since we've actually gone through that formal process of reviewing those standards. Taking a look at the different options that are out there and and working as a team to decide which ones might be the best option for us.
Any other questions for Derek? Did we lose Ron? Oh, there he is, okay. Ron, did you get your questions answered?
I missed most of both of Derek's questions because I've had fluke internet, we'll just have to go ahead, I'm sorry.
They were good answers, definitely follow up.
I think, now they're good, both the starts and the ends sounded great, so.
Ron, if it's okay with you, I'm happy to send you an email to summarizing that information.
We might need to, that'd be great, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if Derek, if you could email us this presentation, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, I'll do that tonight.
Great, all right, well, thank you, if there's any other follow ups or things that people didn't get into tonight, please be sure to follow up with Dr. Brown. Great, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, last piece we have of the meeting is new business, it looks like Nikki will be presenting this. It's a amendment to resolution 2102, which is the resolution authorizing deposit and withdrawal of funds. Nikki, are you available?
Yes, I'm still on my phone here. So. So this amendment, I believe, was around our adding an account. For our. The safekeeping account that we needed to add to hold our bond money, so we just needed to list those, just like we normally do in our. Beginning of the year resolution where we identify all of our banks. So that's, that's what this resolution is doing is to add that other account so we can manage. Manage our funds coming in.
Okay, great, are there any questions for Nikki? Nope, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution. 202102, resolution authorizing deposit and withdrawal of funds by title only.
Okay, do you think of a second from Bob, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. All right, so. Our next meeting in February will be on the 23rd, we decided to cancel the Budget Committee Training Workshop at 6:00. Will do classified in school employees week proclamation. Our course, our consent agenda and our in-person school update from Dr. Morlock, we'll also get our monthly financial reports from Nikki. And we'll get the graduation rate report, and there's a star by the transfer report, so we'll learn more about that. Setting our transfer parameters and potential bond contracts or items. It's also going to be an executive session afterwards to present Dr. Morlock with his valuation. So with that, I think we'll go ahead and adjourn, remember, school board members, there's another Zoom link for us to sign on to. For the executive session, so why don't we take a six minute break? Meet back in the executive session at 8:40, it's a five minute break now. And if you have any complications with that, you can text either Greg or I, right?
And the interpreters are not needed for the executive session.
Thank you, Greg. All right, meeting is adjourned.